Middleton.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Gillum.
Here.
Bruno.
Here.
Have you all read your minutes of the last commission meeting? Are any additions or corrections? No? I get a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Second. Roll call.
Middleton.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
First item of business.
A preliminary plat for lots four through 12, home subdivision, Thomas Engineering Agent.
Staff comments?
Gentlemen and gentlemen, we are still in the process of working out right-of-way roadway design for this application. I think what we're going to request is to draw it and then we'll re-submit. All right, bye to the question.
I move that we approve the request to consider this at a later date.
One second.
All roll.
Middleton.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Next item.
A preliminary plat for Creekside addition, Phase Eight, Thomas Engineering Agent.
For this application, Creekside Phase Eight, we're going to ask to table it. Couple of zoning items that need to be worked out with the planning commission group, so we just request that we table it to the next meeting. All right, bye to you guys.
So moved.
Second.
All roll.
Middleton.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
City planners know this is another example of why we desperately need to have an updated zoning map. They were sort of a victim of misinformation. And on some maps, I think it reflected as R1. On two updated maps, it was revealed that the zoning was different. And so, again, this is another example. I'd just like to draw those out when we can of how critically important that is to everything.
Item number six.
A zoning for 1,000 Landtrip from C3 to R2, Marler Engineering Agent.
Here is the staff report for this. Location for this application is tied to a variance request, preliminary plat request, a site plan request by Mid-South Properties, which is being represented by Marler Engineering. Location address is 2,000 Landtrip. It's currently a rezoning, it's C3, it's R2. It's currently vacant. Current zone is C3. Adjacent uses are undeveloped to the east. USDA APIS to the west, single-family residential to the north. The adjacent zoning is C4 and R1. On the land use plan, it's kind of a little bit hard to formulate, but it's somewhere between strip development and open. In terms of reviewing this, this is for a half acre tract. Intentions of constructing five-plex applicants since change that to four-plex. Five-plex would not be permitted within the Marler Zone. In terms of looking at this, because it's delineated as multi-family or a strip commercial, although this is not in strict sense a completely compatible engine, it would represent what we would call a home zone. It's only to a lesser extent. So because of that, this is incompatible. The applicant has changed their request to four-plex. Here you can see on the map there where we've got sort of that delineation between the two designations. This is strip commercial in this property. The recommendation for action based on the compatibility of this rezoning. Question?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm not sure there's a road going to this property.
That is something that we will address in the site plan. Their staff has.
Okay. This calls for a public hearing, so I'm now going to open the floor for a public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to comment on this proposed rezoning? And if you would, please sign in and state your name and address.
I'm Sam Landtrip. I live at 900 Landtrip. And my property joins this on two sides, on the north and the east. And I'm against this rezoning because this has been zoned C3 for years. Best part in there. And by the way, Steve Jones just got his property next to it on the south side, rezoned from R to C4. We're trying to keep this as a commercial park, not residential. I am potential commercial myself next to it. I will not sell it residential. And a gentleman here came up to comment a while ago, but there's no easement, no property. By the way, I own the driveway. I've been paying taxes on it for 27 years. It was just a drive, all it was. You can see on their survey, they did document a 25-foot easement. Do that, because like the gentleman just said, he believes there's not a drive there. I went over to the county to make sure all my readings and my tax slips lined up with theirs. They told me that I own that property. But you know, you can't landlock somebody. So I had to work something with them. There is not a drive in there, a road in there, as the gentleman said. And so I am definitely against it. This will open up a can of worms. If you zone this, C3 to R2, what would keep them from going down into commercial parks and putting apartments in down there too? You'll have a conglomeration of apartments and commercial. And I don't think the city would vote that. That commercial park's been down there for years. And I think we ought to keep it commercial. What's commercial should stay commercial. That's the way I am. Like I said, it's going to affect me a lot because it would devaluate my property because I'm fixing to try to set it commercial. I have turned down a lot of residential people trying to buy my property. I've held out for years. I figure everything the city does too, on the east side of Landtrip Road, is commercial. Me and my daughter lives on it, but if somebody wants to put a nice commercial building on it, I'll be gone like that. So I'm against it because it will affect me. You need to look into that easement down through there because it's not a good drive in there.
You said you've worked out something about that access?
I haven't. I went over that, had them to check my description on my deed, on my tax slip to make sure that I did own it. They said, yeah, it goes to the section line. It was not marked out or anything. So I've been paying taxes on it for 27 years.
You said that you couldn't landlock a property and you'd worked out something?
Well, you have to. You cannot landlock, to be honest with you. I think that's state law. I know out in the country, if somebody's got a parcel of ground, you've got them sealed off, you've got to give a way in. But you can put you a gate there and give them a key and tell them you lock that gate and unlock that gate when you go in and out. That's the same difference right there. I may can put a gate up there and lock it, and they'll have to come to me and keep you in.
So you're saying that you haven't worked out anything yet with the owner? Okay.
Well, I wish you'd just leave it like it is. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? If you would, please sign in.
Yes, sir.
And give us your name, Mark.
Mark Weber. Thank you. I own property in the commercial area, Commerce Corp., and I'm very much against this too. It's just an opinion that I have that it's not good for the resale value, it's not good for the area. I don't want it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Brian Straight. I also own some property at 2020 Landtrip Road, and I am also against this. I think it's a commercial park. I think it needs to be said that way.
Thank you. Any further comments?
I'm Dr. David Hill. I have a commercial strip center. We are mainly medical. We are on Warden Road, 7517. There's one piece of property between us and this property, one vacant piece. But I agree that we just want to try to keep this area commercial, and that there's been a lot of development over the years, commercial in the area, and we just don't want to see it residential. And I think the access there is also a problem too with the little driveway, and you've got fire trucks and sanitation and everything else getting in here. But we make sure it's better off instead of spot zoning and sticking residential in the middle of commercial, just keeping these zones and hopefully getting it some good commercial development down the road. Good for sure.
Is there somebody representing the developer or the property owner of this parcel?
Hello, I'm Mike Marler with Marler Engineering Company. I would like to address a couple of questions regarding access. There's already a 25-foot right-of-way on that side of the section line for Landtrip Road. It's instrument number 90-14, 873, along with a utility for access all the way to the end of it. It's already an instrument number four of the right-of-way there now. The only other thing I'd say is, is you go to a lot of places today, commercial with residential, multi-family together is the big thing. That's what everybody's going to. So, you know, if not here, then where? And we think this is a great site for... Go to larger municipalities, Dallas, just go to West... Go over to Little Rock in mid-town area, the old mall was. Biggest thing going on in this city right now is multi-family combined with commercial. That's new and innovative as far as growth.
Did I understand, James, to say that you were changing it from a five-plex to a four-plex?
That is exactly right, yes.
Do you anticipate wanting to request a variance for that?
It's needed.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the audience? I'll call the public hearing closed. Time for the commission to discuss.
You know, this is what you might call a commercial subdivision, but I think most of the businesses in this area are not so much... They're not retail. They're closer to industrial. And there's no restaurants. You couldn't buy a pair of underwear in this area. So, you know, it's deserted at night. And I feel like we need... It needs to stay... The character of the area needs to stay the same, and I would not vote for changing it to R2, R3, whatever.
James, you said that it looked to you like there was a mix of proposed land uses affecting the property, but it looks to me pretty much like it's all commercial.
We were confused because of the mapping is old. We weren't quite sure. I think one of the other things that is a bit confusing, on the land use plan, the area to the west where the commercial actually is, that's indicated as multi-family. So it's been zoned as variance with what the plan has indicated for all time. You'll notice here, this area towards the west, closest we could tell is that that's indicated for multi-family. Which is obviously there's a school, multiple business, institutional use, so...
Do I hear a call for a change in the land use plan?
That would tend to make sense.
Gentlemen?
Well, you know, it might be listed on the map as multi-family, but it's developed at this point, in one area against this one, so... Go ahead and make a motion.
Second.
All roll.
Middleton.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Only if it's paid. Under the circumstances, I'm not sure there is a call.
And that pretty much voids out everything else.
To look at the preliminary plat of the site plan.
Do we need a motion to eliminate those two?
I believe the applicant still would like the remainder of the application.
Okay. Item number nine. Is it eight?
Seven.
Okay, seven.
Seven.
A preliminary plat for Lot 1, Pembroke Estate, also known as 1,000 Landtrip, Marler Engineering.
So this is tied to the previous application with the rezoning. As you can see, there is the site for four-plex. We have... One of the questions we had was indicate whether all utilities needed and their sizes are already present on the property and within appropriate offsite easements. All utilities are within the 25-foot Landtrip Road right-of-way easement, which is that instrument that Marler referenced. With the exception of sewer and gas, there is no gas in the lot. They're still researching sewer and... And we had a question regarding the utilities. I think the biggest key in looking at that is there's still some research that's ongoing pertaining to sewer at the site. We did provide, asked for, for the instrument that provides access to that easement that stated 90-... I'd like to see that instrument. Just put that issue there. So, based on the fact that it's unclear whether it can be served by sewer as a net, staff is requesting... With the staff's recommendation.
Discussion.
I move that we table this until a later date to be determined.
Okay.
All roll.
Middleton.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Site plan, number eight.
I would emphasize with the site plan.
I move that we table the site plan to a later date.
Second.
All roll.
Middleton.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Item number nine.
A preliminary plat for Lot 1, Gravel Ridge Fire Board, Marler Engineering Agent.
So this report represents... I'm sorry about the... Making numerous connections.
You're doing that, okay.
This report pertains to both the preliminary plat and the final plat, so item's nine. This is located at 14814 Highway 107, Gravel Ridge Fire Board, Marler Engineering representing. Essentially what this is, is plating multiple existing lots and one-plated lot. The current use of the plantation, current zone is C3. The adjacent uses are multi-family and vacant lots, so the multi-family there, curbs. Retail and commercial, the single-family residential to the west across Highway 107, and then retail and commercial to the north and the south. On the land use plan, this is indicated for highway strip development. So this is sort of a concurrent plat. This is intended to platter multiple parcels into 1.96 acre lot. There was a question regarding whether this application is variance because of the non-conforming nature of the fire structure building. Based on what the applicant is requesting, staff determined that variance would not be necessary because they've been granted non-conforming status. The variance that they were requesting was that if it were reconstructed, that it would form to the apartments, which was basically in line with what you would normally have with the... Staff stated that variance is not necessary for fire building.
What was the nature of the non-conformity?
It's setback, setback, no, out of violation. We could ask that right-of-way be listed on the plat. That was addressed. All of our comments were addressed. We did have one item where we had listed as a contingency. It does not show on this drill, but on the southern portion of the lot, there's new access that is being provided to the multi-family that's to the east. And the existing access that goes through the middle of the lot is being obliterated. And so, we inform the applicant that they would need to provide paved access. It's currently gravel, stated as gravel, which the previous driveway was asphalt. And so we're listing paving that as a contingency on the plat, which the applicant is in one property. So based on that, the staff's recommendation is approval with contingencies, pave the new gravel driveway.
Commercial.
I move that we approve the preliminary plat.
One second.
Is that with the contingency?
With the contingency. With the contingencies, yes.
All roll.
Middleton.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Item number 11. Well, did we cover both of those?
I think the motion was...
Okay. Yeah, we gotta do the final two.
A final plat for Lot 1, Gravel Ridge Fire Board, Marler Engineering Agent.
I move that we approve final plat, Lot 1, Gravel Ridge Fire Board.
One second.
All roll.
Middleton.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
How could we do 11?
A replat for Lot C, Wandering Ridge Subdivision, Whitlow Engineering Agent.
This is located on the north end of town at the 15,900 block of Highway 107. This is also for Gravel Ridge Fire Department. Whitlow Engineering is representing. This is for replat approval and current use of the property, vacant, currently zoned as C3. It's vacant slash commercial to the east, residential to the west, vacant slash residential to the north, church slash vacant to the south. There's a hodgepodge of running surrounding this, including C3, R2, R3, R1, C4, and properties indicated for highway strip. This application is tied to a site plan approval, Gravel Ridge Fire Department, Lot 2. And I won't go through all of these comments. We had some comments pertaining to the right-of-way, things needed to be shown on the plat, questions about utilities, some additional sort of items to be included. There's fire hydrant, 175 feet to the west, purpose for Lot C. Given that all of these have been addressed, or most of them addressed, the recommendation is approval with contingency. The remaining thing is the drainage plan, which would require city engineer approval. Kind of a standard contingency. So that's staff recommendation is approval with contingency. City engineer approval.
Refresh my memory, what was it this board or commission took up four or five months ago on this property?
I believe there was a variance request pertaining to this lot in anticipation of this application.
My only comment is that I don't think the chairman or director of the Kualaski County Planning Commission is going to sign this. That's what's on this.
That's what the script reads.
That will be corrected, right?
I would list that as a second. Actually, I believe that the circuitated was one of the comments.
Discussion.
The fire board's taking Lot C2, is that...
Yeah, it's essentially the middle lot there.
Does that make Lot C3 unbuiltable, basically, by the use...
No, that doesn't.
Okay.
They're pretty tight to me. I would anticipate another... I guess the original variance actually covered that one.
Oh.
Is there any discussion, or is there a motion?
I move that we approve the replat of Gravel Ridge Fire Department, 15,900 block of Highway 107.
Second.
With contingencies.
With contingency.
Agreed. All roll.
Middleton.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
A site plan for Lot C, Wandering Ridge Subdivision, Whitlow Engineering Agent.
So this is the same property that we previously discussed. This is a site plan approval to construct a 2,583 square foot fire department structure, tied to that previous replat application. We had some questions pertaining to the landscaping plan. We had some questions pertaining to landscaping plans, applicant provided an update, however that additional landscaping would be subject to hard audit because of its proximity to right of way. The applicant, we had a question about the irrigation plan, applicant added a note on site plan regarding that irrigation would be provided with landscaping. One of the comments that we had pertaining to wandering ridge, sidewalk, sidewalk requirement on the upper. The applicant has stated that it would be because of, behold, wandering ridge happens to be somewhat topographical challenge area. But because of the topography of that area, it would be near impossible to provide an KDA compliant sidewalk, although you can construct sidewalks that, that follow the general grade of the street, given that the site is a double frontage lot, very close access, and there would be a sidewalk that would be required on the south side of the street. It does not appear that, that given the constraints, that it'd make a great deal of sense for a far sidewalk on the south side of wandering ridge. And so the applicant has requested that that department waive staff's, that waiver request. They provided drainage grading plans, erosion control, all of those things. So as, as a result, recommendation, staff recommendation action, it is approval with contingency, waiver, the contingency, the city engineer, approval of the drainage plans, erosion control plan, and grading plans, which are formal with construction plans following that approval. And then waiver request, waiver of sidewalk requirement on wandering ridge road, due to presence of sidewalk on highway one oh seven, topography.
Any discussion?
Sounds logical.
Yes.
To me.
Yeah.
Motion to approve with the contingency and the waiver.
One second.
All roll.
Middleton?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Ilum?
Aye.
Bruno? Aye.
Item thirteen?
A replat for lot three A Sherwood Forest Edition, Thomas Engineering Agent.
This site is south of sixty one hundred, Wardland Road, right next to St. Vincent's Road, this is for the St. Vincent's PNI, this is coming in if you've heard about that. The action request on this is replat addressing only current use of the site is vacant, currently known as C three. It's vacant and commercial to the east, actually it's all commercial and residential. Medical center to the west, commercial to the north, commercial slash sales to the south, base of funding is C three and C four. There is indicated strip development, shopping. So far, but also tied to the site plan application, that, that site plan would be a forty two thousand six hundred and forty-six square foot neuroscience center on two point seven acres, two point seven acres. We had initially reviewing this, we had some, some questions about easements, and the recent submitted, the applicant's provisions more clearly showed what is being new and what is, what is being asked to be approved. All of the easements will be dedicated to the public, we, we ask that they clearly create those, there is a sewer line that will have to be abandoned, and so as a result, the applicant will need to petition city council to file a vacated easement for ACA four two one ninety nine. Unfortunately, I, I don't think there's a different way that we can complete a vacated easement without the city council action. I wish it weren't, which is the way it is. So the recommendation for action is approval with contingency, the plat will not be signed until the eighteen foot sewer easement is formally abandoned by the Sherwood. Say it's a sewer reason? Yes, it's a sewer reason.
But there's no sewer there, no pipe.
They'll be relocated.
They will have to relocate pipe, okay.
Well, gentlemen, Thomas, Tom, Thomas, yes, we will petition the council for the abandonment, more of a relocation, we'll do it through the council. Handle that, we can't abandon easement till the sewer lines moved, that's gonna be kind of part of the construction process.
Question for you.
Yes.
On the west side, you've got a, what looks like a grade outline that you're gonna abandon and a thirty foot dimension to it from the one you handed out. Is that, is that a misdraw or is your?
One, one, one second, let me get in front of you.
Okay. Decided Jackson to the hospital.
Okay, now, now which one are you looking at?
Where the forty-three foot dimension turns into the thirty foot easement.
Well, that forty-three feet has to stay there.
Understand, but just below it, there's a thirty foot dimension that goes to a line that is grayed out, and there's a darker black line a few feet off of it.
Uh.
Is that it?
It should be thirty feet.
Okay.
Let's make, make sure.
Okay.
Any kind of correction, we'll make, make sure it matches. It should, you know, thinking of this replat as, by changing the boundary, we're just moving easements, that's a little cleaner to do it with the plat rather than instrument. I'll check that and make sure.
Okay, just, just making sure that it's not a change out there that needs to be documented as well.
We're not approving any changes.
Okay. Motion to approve the replat.
Middleton?
Aye.
Ilum?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
A site plan for lot three A Sherwood Forest Edition, Thomas Engineering Agent.
This is item fourteen.
Yeah. So this is in the same location, this is the forty two thousand six hundred and forty-six square foot neuroscience center. We did have the questions pertaining to the easement, there were some questions pertaining to FFP, the structure would be above the base flood elevation area, there is some provision to allow critical facilities to require higher feet to be, but this is, this will be four and a half feet above that, additionally, the parking lot would be above the base flood elevation as well, so applicant's safety would not be an issue with the site. The applicant will be submitting drainage study to correspond with, with that plans that would be a contingency. There's a comment in the landscape plan that allows made grass, so they substitute the void that, beyond wishes, that would not comply with the landscape ordinance, so we ask that the applicant revise that. They made some provisions pertaining to setback lines, one pertaining to parking calculations on the site itself, the site does not make the, the required parking because the use of the park one hundred and seventy-seven spaces, there are one hundred and thirteen provided, however, the, the, the site will be sharing parking with St. Vincent's, of course, St. Vincent's North, or St. Vincent's North, which has plenty of excess parking, so based on that, staff considers parking to be a bad situation, certainly don't want to have, the other side has an excess parking, certainly don't want to require excess parking on the site as well.
Is that taking the consideration, the area that they're gonna take the parking away from for the hillipad?
Yes. With the architectural elevations, we ask that they provide those to verify conformance with building design standards, that's to be provided grading permit standard, standard grading permit. This is sort of where the flood hazards are, inside there's the base flood elevation to seven. I mean, you can see the, the plan indication there. So the recommendation for this item is approval with contingencies, these would be submit drainage and grading plans for approval by the city engineer, submit erosion control plans, provide on protection elevations for approval by the building inspector, provide a, provide a state plan, taking out about the exposure, and no building permit would be issued, probably have been. Okay.
Calls for a public hearing, does anybody wish to be heard? Public hearing closed.
Make a motion we approve with contingent.
Second.
Middleton?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Ilum?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Item fifteen?
Revisions to zoning and subdivision regulations regarding digital submissions.
Yes. So this pertains to a grant application that is being sought by the city as it relates to as-built, putting those sort of into the digital GIS environment. So with this, we discussed this previously last month, there's only been very few minor changes relating to this. So I, I'll kind of leave it with, anyone have any questions?
This calls for a public hearing, so has anybody in the audience wish to speak to this? Public hearing's closed. I'll make one comment on the second page under as-built requirements. It reads the submission requirements for a certificate of occupancy for a tied structure tied, one tied too many.
Yeah, that, that first tied, tied.
I started that, didn't I? Hey, I'm not a hundred percent sure how to proceed, but I do know that this will result in two ordinances, one to amend the zoning regulations and another to amend the subdivision regulations, so we could take it up as one recommendation for both or two recommendations.
Based on Mr. Cobb's advice, whichever way he thinks it needs to be.
If we talk about, I think, if we understand that we're talking about, I think it's a fair to take that as one.
Okay.
But, things I wanna, while we're on here together, in the event that, that the recommendation is to the council that we change the, then can you supply me with regulations as one document that I want to attach to the board? Because some of this is, for some sections to be less than changed, I'd rather it re, like.
Sure, yes.
Yeah. I can attach it to your.
Yeah.
So that's procedurally and administratively how it will be handled, but what, what the commission needs to act on are these additions to those two codes.
So do you need one motion or two to send this to the council? Okay. One motion, okay, so motion we send this to the city council to amend the two ordinances? Is that what you needed to say? Okay, there it is.
Thank you.
All roll.
Middleton?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Next is item number sixteen.
Do you do revisions?
And again, this calls for a public hearing, if anybody wish to speak to this? Hearing none, I call the hearing closed.
Yes.
Out of them?
Nope, okay.
Right there.
Starts, the line starts with approved by city, city attorney.
Yes, all right, yeah. That should be reviewed, that, that should, that should read reviewed. Yes, that, that line should read reviewed, obviously.
Make a motion we adopt with the revision.
Could your motion read, read to recommend adoption by the city council? There you go.
I, I do have, I did have one small change that I wanted to make sure that you all were aware of, just, just to make sure that, that we have discussed. What we've got in here, let me see. I apologize. Item F and item G, these are two new things, having a discussion with, with the chairman, there was concern about, you know, potentially approving something that might not actually provide a discernible benefit beyond funding. And so we have two additions here, first relating to amenities, developments would include at least two amenities from the following, green belt buffer, these thirty feet width, picnic area, gazebo, dog park, commons pool, clubhouse, playground, walking trail, recreation field, fields, architectural fencing, this list would not be considered exhaustive, and other amenities may be considered for, on the request by the act. So that's just meant to, that there'd be some sort of amenity that is included as part of the development, the review process. The second is developed in parting building design, developments incorporating residential and commercial use to incorporate architectural materials and the design of all structures, all facade walls, walls with toes of a hundred percent architectural materials, including at least two of the following materials, sod, wall, brick, eith, eith slash tribit, architectural concrete blocks, brass, glass, precast, pre, precast, sorry, I need to change that to cast. Concrete, native stone, wood, tile, spucco, fiberglass siding, limited closet panels, this, this would not be considered exhaustive, materials would be considered on the, on the act.
Let me explain where I was coming from, as it's written, there were quite a few conditions that described what we would expect to see out of any mixed use or residential. It was very specific and a, a lot of attention was paid to it, so you could tell that in order to do a planned unit development like that, there was something quite different from what you would expect in a traditional R one, two, three, four, and so forth. There weren't the same kind of explanations or suggestions for commercial, and my concern is I would like there be more guidance to the commission and to the council as to what makes a commercial kind of a planned unit development beneficial, more beneficial than just a C one, C two, C three, C four. If it's nothing but conventional commercial use warmed over and called a planned unit development, we haven't accomplished anything except possibly wiring around the normal zoning requirements. I wanted to say something that gave us a little more guidance about what that public benefit is that we should be getting from a planned unit development that's commercial in nature.
I agree with you.
Cause that's one of those things that I know it when I see it, yet we need some guidance and that's what I was looking for. So there was a motion on the floor, is it still a good motion?
I'm gonna pull that motion. I agree with you on the duties. Guidance on the commercials. Guidance on the commercials, we've got plenty of it on the.
James, was it your sense that adding that stuff to F and G was to try and accommodate that?
Yes, that was the answer. That there would be definable amenities and there would be architectural standards that would be applied to this stuff. So, for instance, let's say that you're going to have something that were traditionally a C4 use, C4 zone, there are no architectural standards. So, if something were going to be a traditional C4 use that went through the process, you would have architectural standards. If you had something that might be a traditional C1, C2 use, that you didn't necessarily have a buffer requirement, this would, for instance, you could require sort of an undisturbed green belt buffer around sort of portions of the property to provide level of city, but additionally having a requirement for some type of architecture, something beyond a simple chain link fence or razor wire or something like that, something that created a discernible, sort of a high quality material that provided this.
That gives me more comfort than I had before.
Yeah.
And making that list, I didn't want it to be exhaustive, I wanted to give an example of things that could be included. But, I think the biggest thing is that there is a requirement that two amenities be included that are above and beyond what you would normally do and additionally the architectural.
Planned unit development walks a fine line between being too prescriptive, which means overregulated, which is what normal zones do anyway, and too permissive, which allows way too much discretion, which could go south real quick. I think this probably strikes as good a balance as we can get.
Reading, yeah.
Paragraph G. I don't, I don't see metal buildings in there, which suits me just fine. I used to be. Spent two summers designing metal buildings prefab, structural steel. It seems that this would eliminate the old prefab metal buildings.
You could, you could still build a prefab metal building, but it would need to be clad in some type of architecture.
Okay.
Kind of the reasoning, the reasoning for a requirement like this, although metal building, they're very inexpensive compared to other construction. Costs a lot more. But, what tends to happen is you will have folks that will put those up and intend it with some sort of use and go away in six months. Then you have a structure that based on the appearance of it, you know, a lot of other businesses don't like to use it, so it can create a nice over, over time, that is something that's unused. See that happen repeatedly.
Yeah.
Agreed.
I agree with that. We've got some buildings on the street right here that they put a little brick on the front and a little bit of metal on the side, it's pretty ugly. So, I'm happy with it.
I'll go back and.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Roll the roll.
Middleton.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Dylan.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Next item seventeen.
An ordinance amending ordinance seven twenty-nine regulating the paving of driveways for filling conflicting ordinances and for other purposes.
Over you.
All right, with this, this is a bit of a change from where we've been, but it's largely intact from last time that you saw it. The big changes here with this, with this draft is if, let's say that the driveway is over a hundred and eight, let's say it's a hundred, a hundred feet have to be paved. Seventy-five feet, seventy-five feet. If it's a hundred fifty feet, a hundred feet. So, it's the first hundred feet are required to be paved for a single family dwelling. Paving would be required for everything.
The second change is that there is now the definition of a driveway. We had what a driveway consisted of, what you had to construct it of, but we never had any place in the current zoning regulations as to what it was. And this came up because there are some instances in this city where there are in fact a driveway, which is acting as a parking pad for a recreational vehicle in the front yard, but it is a driveway to the extent that it connects to the street. And so, it seemed to me important that we have a definition in there so that enforcement would know what they're enforcing.
We'll need to, after, if this is considered for adoption, add done and definition reference to say, add fallen lane to section.
Okay, this does require a public hearing, does anybody wish to speak to it? Hearing none, I call the hearing closed. Discussion.
We've talked through this one several times. I think it's as good as it's going to be. Make a motion we send it to the city council.
I'll second this.
Roll the roll.
Middleton.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Dylan.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Old business, is there any old business? Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of. New business, Andy.
I've got a PowerPoint here I want to start at. My name is Andy Wilson, I work for the permit department. I've asked the chairman of the planning commission permission to address this body on behalf of the permits and planning department to start a conversation concerning the separation requirements from the principal building or house for accessory structures and uses relating to home improvement, projects including decks, paraglars, swimming pools, hot tubs, and other types of accessory structures. Currently, the language in our existing zoning regulations and building codes for given projects such as these displayed in this PowerPoint slideshow, on the basis of attachment or non-attachment, instead of focusing on the basis of maintaining required setbacks and separation requirements. However, it seems apparent to me that the true intent of the zoning regulations and building codes is to simply ensure acceptable building setbacks and separation requirements, resulting in safe and healthy homes in our neighborhoods. I believe better zoning regulation principles and language are possible that will allow our citizens more free enjoyment of their property, yet maintain the life safety, fire protection, light, and ventilation objectives promulgated by the rules and regulations to ensure we are not constructing buildings too close together and too close to respective neighbors as to create unsafe conditions. And the handout that I've just handed out has just a page out of our zoning book and then the second page has the definitions in our zoning book and one definition in our building code that is the basis for a whole lot of decisions that we make as far as what people can and can't do when it comes to accessory structures. And what I'm basically suggesting, and you know, if, if we can, at some point talk about some of the examples maybe listed here or whatever, I'm suggesting that we get away from the notion of attachment or detachment as being a basis for making decisions on the placement of accessory structures and that we, we just kind of focus it more on the idea that if it is in close proximity to the principal structure or the house, that it has to meet the same setbacks as the house meets, the side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, et cetera. Whereas, if it, if it can't meet those setbacks, then we absolutely insist on the separation requirement, the ten-foot separation. Because I believe all these rules combined, that the real principle of all these rules is to keep, is my understanding is to keep fire from spreading from one building to an accessory building to another gas building to the house next door, et cetera, and also to where we have, you know, good light coming in the windows and good ventilation around the homes. So, you know, there's an example of an indoor outdoor pool, we can't do that here. That pool's too close to the deck, we consider the deck part of the principal structure. That paraglars out too close to the house. We require ten foot of separation. And these outdoor kitchens and these paraglars have really brought this to the forefront of being a problem because they've just gotten so popular and what people, people are buying kits from like Lowe's and they're wanting this paraglars on their, you know, existing patio or they definitely, they tend to want it up next to their house, but a lot of times they'll have a gutter going across that they want to retain, et cetera, et cetera. So, my idea is just to see if we can work on some of the principles that we use now to determine whether something is going to be treated with the setbacks for the principal dwelling, or is it going to be treated with reduced setbacks that accessory structures are able to enjoy. I think we primarily use the terms attachment and detachment as a means to accomplish that objective.
So, what's your thought of how to define whether it's going to have to meet the principal structure setbacks or?
Well.
If it's less than that ten-foot separation, then it's got to make, I mean, is that what you're going for? I mean, you used the term close proximity a minute ago, but, I mean.
Well, that's exactly what I'd like, you know, everybody to take a look at the language we have now and maybe we can bring some stuff to the table next month and maybe we'll work out some, some possible language. Me and Richard and Paul talked a little bit about it and, and we started thinking in terms of, you know, within a foot of, okay? And then after that following, you know, I was just driving around thinking about this and, and you know, what really came to mind is that, you know, unless we have a good reason for caring, you know, and that's part of what I'm looking for, is there something I'm missing here? I mean, do we care that somebody establishes a freestanding paraglars a foot from their house or three foot from their house or ten foot from their house? And I think the answer is, well, we start caring when you start approaching on those established setbacks for that zoning classification. And that's, that's when we should start caring. Whereas, if somebody, just whatever their plan is involves putting that fence or structure or paraglars, whatever it is, gazebo, and they're automatically shooting towards getting close to a property line and they're going to try to take advantage of the full amount that we have out for accessory structure, which is four foot, well, then we're going to absolutely insist I have that separation to the main structure. But, if you base it on the, on the setback for the zoning classification and you're always getting the setbacks, if it's within, you know, my idea is if it's within ten foot of the structure, we're going to insist that they have the setbacks, same as the house. Okay? In other words, we're going to treat it as part of the principal structure.
Yeah, that's what I was leading to a minute ago because that, that ten-foot rule was established for the fire department to have access all the way around the house. Right? I mean, I remember the.
Well.
Paul's back here going, yeah, maybe.
We've had a lot of.
That's what we've always, yeah, I mean, that's. Yeah, that's.
James asked me, we were discussing this a little bit this morning, he asked me was there something in the fire code that's, that's calling for this, and the answer is no, there's not. And I went back to the last edition we had was ninety-one, but there's no, there's no reference in any of the building codes for these separation requirements, this is all vocal zoning stuff, you know, this is self-inflicted punishment. But, but I, you know, I think we know what was trying to be accomplished, and I'm not saying it's bad, but if, you know, somebody wants to build a, you know, a deck right up close to their house or out in their backyard, or if they want to, you know, we can take examples of each one of these things. Now, one, one thing I know is like storage buildings, and that's also for accessory structures. Now, I could understand why we wouldn't want somebody placing one of those like in front of an egress window. So, that might be an area that we leave alone and it is separately addressed in our accessory structure ordinance.
Would it make any difference for an accessory structure of any kind against a house that did not currently meet the state fire code?
Well, I think there's kind of a presumption, you know, as we do our jobs, that all houses meet or didn't meet the, the fire code. Now, the building code essentially is the fire code. It's the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, that is our building code, and there's a presumption when we approve, you know, anything, there's just kind of a presumption made that the house is sound and meets the, met the current codes that were appropriate at the time.
If it was an older unit that may or may not meet the current code, especially for flame retardant walls, would that make a difference on how close you put a fire pit and a deck next to the house?
Well, you know, on decks, it doesn't, I understand where you're going with this and it's, you know, I understand, but you know, when we approve a deck application, it is strictly based on setbacks. Now, now, I will say this, we treat covered decks differently than we do uncovered decks. In terms of setbacks, because in these rules, and there's definitions there for a covered and uncovered deck, but also for purposes of the building code, when you have a roof, you have snow loads and wind loads that don't apply to an uncovered deck. So, you know, we might require a footing for a covered deck where we don't require necessarily a footing for just a, an open deck.
Get together with staff and make, make a suggestion to us.
Okay. Y'all be thinking about it, we welcome any comments next month.
I mean.
Thank you. There, there was one piece of kind of sort of old business and that's the status of the updated zoning map and the updated zoning code. The code is in draft form, it has just a little bit more work to do and I've asked staff to review the thing to make sure that we're not overlooking something. What Metro Plan gave us was every ordinance that had been adopted is now included in that text. And I went ahead and took the liberty of changing it from its current format to the format as a zoning code, not a zoning ordinance or zoning regulation. And I'm going to propose, hopefully pretty soon, that we make a recommendation to the city council that they adopt a zoning code and from now on, we amend the code, not amending an ordinance that's amending an ordinance that's amending an amendment. There's still a few, and, and what it's at right now should include everything that has been adopted to date, no revisions, no changes, we need to start at ground zero. adopted to date, no revisions, no changes, we need to start at ground zero. Obviously, there's some suggestions that we need to get, but right now, nobody has a current copy of the Sherwood zoning code, and I hope we can fix that in the next month or two.
When this comes out, are we going to present this out in a digital format, searchable here for everybody?
That would be nice. It's something, not only be searchable, but be online and every time it's changed, it be currently posted. And on the zoning map, Metro Plan has been working to convert our current zoning map, A, to get it current because it hadn't always been, and B, zoning boundaries, or zoning district boundaries have far too frequently are supposed to be going along property lines but aren't, and it's because of an old mapping technology against new parcel data. And Metro Plan has been trying to collapse that where it is obvious that a zoning district line followed some property lines or creek or section line or center line or whatever is to get it to conform to those lines on current modern mapping. And, and they have almost finished that, and it's getting just more and more critical that we get that up to date. It is something that my proposal to you all would be that, once we've had a look at it and staff has reviewed it, make sure, bless Paul, counting on your historical perspective here, we want to make sure that it accurately reflects because in some cases, we have found that some of the zoning classifications missed an ordinance and some we thought were an ordinance that weren't. So, we're trying to get that straightened out, Metro Plan's doing a super job on that. Hopefully, within the next two months, we can get a new map, and it will require a public hearing and a recommendation to the city council of whatever it was before now, this is what it is, and we'll keep it up to date from now on. That's all I got. Can I hear a motion to adjourn?
Middleton?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Dylan?
Bruno?
Aye.
Call the meeting of the Sherwood Board of Adjustment to order. Call the roll.
Middleton?
Aye.
Martin?
Here.
Dylan?
Here.
Bruno?
Here.
You have received the minutes, are there any corrections or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Middleton?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
For the record, the Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial entity, and as such, all testimony is sworn testimony, and the decisions made by this board are final and can only be a challenge to a court of law. To swear in the city engineer and the city planner, do you, will you tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
I will. Agenda.
A variance request to allow a five-plex unless required one acre at one thousand foot from Harbridge agent.
I believe that, I would take that as a notification, a request.
Second.
It needs to be changed to, it'll be a four-plex anyway, correct?
It will be.
Middleton?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
A variance request of two feet required twenty-five foot rear yard setback at six-eleven West Devon, Richard Thackeray, owner.
We had some, actually kept saying I didn't send it to them, and apparently I didn't bring it on my flash drive either over here, so, and I couldn't find it on my email where I sent it, but I thought I sent it. Essentially, what this request is, the applicant's request to have a petition on the rear side of the property to allow a renovation that would approach two feet on the required setbacks, the setback would go to twenty-three feet on this. The applicant did not provide any basis for the reason for the variance request, and staff were dealing in, staff did not find a particular hardship with this. So, based on that, staff's recommendation, it appeared that this should be denied based on the fact that it should be granting privilege to property owners, to property, similar properties to have. I will say this, however, staff would definitely support either a change to what the required rear yard setbacks are because it is rather large, there's a lot of opportunities, or additionally recommend revision to zoning code that would stipulate allow intrusions of like this into the required yard performance when it can be demonstrated that such intrusions within a certain parameter wouldn't create a health, safety, or health or safety policy. I've implemented that, other communities have solved a lot of issues, sort of tricky issues like this where it shouldn't be really that big a issue, is one of those questions. But strictly based upon, does this meet the requirements for whether a variance should be approved, staff just...
Is there anybody here representing the applicant? In making any statement here, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth?
I do. Good evening, members of the planning commission, my name's Richard Thackeray. I know this may not be relevant, this house had been on the market for over a year and not in the greatest of shape. And my, I've been a member of the community of Sherwood since nineteen ninety-eight, I have my business also here in Sherwood. I love my city, and I've been blessed to be in a position to purchase a number of properties in the last year. When I do renovate those properties, take a lot of pride, I don't have assets, so to speak, offense, to completely redo the electrical plumbing, do a great job. And I think I'm an asset to the community. This is a house that I plan on living in myself. The master bedroom was quite small, and the closet, the existing closet took up a lot of space. I believe that's why the house had been on, one of the reasons why the house had been on the market so long. I would really appreciate to make an exception and allow me the two feet. You look at the, I've got a picture of it on a satellite, there's no housing structure directly behind the area where I'm wanting to do the additional two feet. My neighbors are, neighbors around me, I've spoke with a few of them, they're very excited the fact that I purchased this property, I'm doing a complete remodel. I believe that the house completed would be an asset to the neighborhood and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I am sympathetic to what the applicant wants to do, and the problem is not unique to this property, which is the criteria for a variance. The problem is, as James has suggested, rather large backyard requirement way over and above what's really needed to protect anything. So, I would have to vote against this, but I would have to go along with James that I think we very much need to make a recommendation, the planning commission needs to make a recommendation to the city council to change that setback so that we don't keep getting variances for people who want to do reasonable things.
Well, I'm sympathetic also, I agree with you on that. You know, two feet is only a feat, but we do have a code, we need to stick with the code.
Andy or Paul, I got a question for you two. He's got a survey of the house here, are we not applying the rear yard setback to the wrong side? Is this...
Hey, this is a side yard setback.
This is, is this not a side yard setback? He has a hundred foot of frontage on Coulter and a hundred and thirty on Devon. I understand, but...
The rear yard setback is going to be on either side, and the remainder is going to be a side yard setback.
Yeah.
That's, well, that's the principle we've been following now for, I guess, about the last six or seven years, you know, at one time, they said the rear yard setback had to go with the length of the property. In this particular instance, we determined that to be the rear yard setback because it was just, it was the twenty-five foot setback. At the same time, a bit of a matter of dispute that I had, because I have always operated under premise, and I explained to Mr. Thackeray, encouraged him to go ahead and go for this variance, because I always understood that a corner lot because of having two front yard setbacks and a rear yard setback, that in itself was a hardship, because so much of that real estate is being absorbed by setback.
I disagree, but during my tenure, we were plating rear yard setbacks on the plaits for a reason, so this wouldn't apply. It was always the side opposite, the shortest street side, which is why I asked, okay?
At least in our practice in the office, that's changed.
Okay, I mean, that's why I'm asking the question.
We went with, went to Ellen, we had several new homes that were being built, and they kept coming across my desk, and they wanted to turn the entrance a certain way and utilize the property to its highest advantage, so...
This is a pretty unique lot, it's extremely wide and narrow, partially narrow, but a pretty, a pretty good length.
I mean, because even in the survey, it's got a fifteen-foot building line to Devon and twenty-five to, I mean, this lot, I'm taking the assumption here during his time, intended on that house to face Coulter, not Devon. I mean, I mean, based on the way I'm reading the survey, right? I mean, because it...
It faces Devon.
I understand that's the way it got built, but...
Right. It's got a lot of slope to the lot, that may have something to do with it, that kind of pushed it up into the inside property line is...
What is the year of the required rear yard setback?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, I think. Twenty-five feet. Well, if he's thirteen foot eight inches on, or thirteen point eight feet on the north, that means that cannot be the rear yard. So, that means that the west line must be the rear yard.
That's how we're...
So, and so, twenty-five feet, let's see, that'd be six feet, eight feet.
He could build a six-foot addition without a variance as well.
Yeah, he could build six feet without a variance.
That's correct.
Of course, most houses have two side yard setbacks and a front and a rear.
I would like a, I would like to know, just a refresher from the planning commission, if we consider a corner lot to be a hardship in itself because of the additional yard?
No, because there's many, 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 many corner lots, and it would have to be something unique to a specific lot in order to be considered for a variance. And there's any number of that look just like this, unfortunately, and this goes back to when you have a situation like this, where you can't do something that's reasonable, the problem is not a variance, the problem is the regulation itself.
I understand. Any more questions?
No, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion.
I move that we approve the two variants.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Ready to roll.
Middleton?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Bruno?
Oh.
The motion fails.
Steph, this, I would request, is this something you would like staff to take up to look into to make another revision of code, handle this issue?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, how soon could that be accomplished? It's up to you, it could be at the next meeting.
Put it on the agenda for the planning commission next month.
Mr. Thackeray, would that serve, one more meeting, would that serve to help? That may be the best that we can do, but since it does seem to be applying to many other situations that we come across in planning and permits, overall, this is going to be a help to our department in several situations. So, I think it would be good to proceed as quickly as we can on it.
So, two people are in agreement, you know, kind enough to overlook the setback. If we're going to make a change, potentially thirty, sixty, ninety, eighty, could I find any of the others that say anything in your heart just to give me just two?
As I said, I sympathize, but I won't vote to break what I consider a lawful requirement. The law needs to be changed. Is there any old business? Any new business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.